I will call the February meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Hicks for the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you today. We thank you for this day, and we thank you for already seeing fit to bestow blessings upon us. We thank you, Lord, for life, health, and strength, and for a reasonably good portion of good faith. We also thank you for the mind to do your will. We ask that you would continue, oh Lord, to go with the citizens of this great country, of this city, of this state, and of our world. We'd like, oh God, that you would protect our kids as they strive to educate themselves and let no more hurt, harm, danger come their way. Oh God, intercede, as we deliberate today, on the business of the commission, and we will be so careful to give your name to praise. It is in the matchless name of Jesus we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Wyman, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Creakmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwin. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyman. Are there any corrections to the January minutes that was presented in our package? Here and now, they were standard approved as presented. I'd like to welcome Ms. Bauer to the Planning Commission, and good luck.
Very much.
You have a lot of work coming up, because Mr. Wyman is keeping us on track. And I'd like to make an announcement also, that Mr. Eberwin has been appointed to the Committee on Ordinance, so he will be at the next meeting with the ordinance. This afternoon, we have four items for public hearings. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. So this afternoon, we have the first item on our agenda would be rezoning request, RZN 2022-014. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request, RZN 2022-014, conditional, Hillpoint Trace, submitted by Brian Lane of Parish Lane Design Group, applicant on behalf of Thomas F. Taft, Sr., Taft Mills Group, LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31304, 31305, and 31404 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved master plan for the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development for property located on the 500 block of Hillpoint Boulevard, zoning map 26F1B, parcel E. The purpose of this request generally is to amend the approved master plan for the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development by modifying the proposed use for parcel E from a hotel to multifamily residential. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chukatuck Voting Borough, Zoned PD Plan Development Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acted on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2022-014, conditional. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report on this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to amend the approved Hillpoint Farms Master Plan by modifying the designated land use on the subject parcel from hotel to multifamily residential. The subject property is located within the 500 block of Hillpoint Boulevard and is presently designated as used for a hotel on the approved master plan and designated within the Central Growth Area, Suburban Use District, in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. For some history on this property, in 1986, the original Hillpoint Farms Plan Development was approved as a part of rezoning request RR-13-86. The approved master plan included designated uses such as single-family and multifamily residential, office commercial uses, and a hotel. In 1997, City Council voted to amend the Hillpoint Master Plan, which moved the location of the Naismith River Golf Course and reduced the total number of permitted dwelling units from 2,448 to 1,813. In 1999, the city adopted a new Unified Development Ordinance that included new rules for PD zoning. Section 31-404 allowed existing PDs to be governed by the ordinance that was in effect at the time of their creations. As such, the Hillpoint Farms Master Plan is governed by the rules and regulations found within the City of Suffolk zoning ordinance adopted in 1976. In October 2016, approval was received to change the zoning of 300, I'm sorry, 37.65 acres within the Hillpoint Farms Plan Master Development from PD Plan Development District to RU Residential Urban Zoning District. The rezoning impacted a portion of the Naismith River Golf Club, which reduced its overall size to make room for 193 single-family residential dwellings. These dwellings are included and accounted for within the total 1,813 dwelling units allowed in the amended PD. In December of 2019, RZN 2019-009 was approved that allowed for the amendment to the master plan to facilitate the transfer of 230 multifamily residential units from parcel H to parcel B. At the time of the request, parcel H was approved for 394 multifamily units while parcel B was designated for office commercial use. On March 17, 2021, SPL 2020-021 was approved for the Port 58 apartments on parcel B. Lastly, in September of 2021, RZN 2021-008 was approved that allowed for the amendment of the master plan to modify the location and amount of previously approved residential, recreational, and active and passive open space land uses for parcel S6, the Naismith River Golf Course. The rezoning allowed for the designation of the golf course to be changed to low-density residential, four units per acre, in order to allow for the construction of no more than 195 homes on the previous golf course parcel. The applicant is requesting to amend the approved Hillpoint Farms Master Plan, which previously depicted parcel E as being reserved for hotel use, and the applicant is requesting to change the permitted use to a 75-unit multifamily residential apartment complex at a density of no more than 16 dwelling units per acre. The approved land uses in Hillpoint according to the master plan include low-density residential, four units per acre, medium-density, single-family detached residential, six units per acre, medium-density residential, eight units per acre, high-density residential, 16 units per acre, including multifamily residential, office commercial, and elementary school, infrastructure, hotel, and movie studio, and open space. The provided conceptual plan proposes two multifamily unit buildings on roughly 4.7 acres that will consist of either three or four stories in an active open place, space area. The development is proposed to serve low-income residents, which are defined as households earning 80% of the average median income for the Hampton Roads region, as defined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which for the fiscal year 2022 is 59,850 per two-person household and 67,350 per three-person household. In addition to the type of land use and density, the applicant has voluntarily proffered the architectural building elevations as a part of their request in order to demonstrate the quality of the project once completed. Supplemental information provided by the applicant states that the subject parcel has remained undeveloped within the master plan development for more than 30 years and would better serve as a transitional residential use rather than a hotel. Additionally, the proposed development would complement the city's investment along the Godwin Boulevard Transportation Corridor while providing a sound growth opportunity that will offer affordable housing to new jobs created with economic growth. The City of Suffolk has recently experienced with the new Public Storage Store within Planner Station and the Route 58 business growth and construction activity. The applicant has reached out to Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority and has received a letter of support for the proposed project. Additionally, a community meeting was held in November 2022 to discuss the proposed project, and the applicant has received a letter of support from Hillpoint Farms Homeowners' Association as well. Copies of both of those letters have been placed at the dais for you all. The suburban use district recommends a density of one to five units per acre. The applicant is proposing to construct 75 multifamily unit residential apartment complex with a proposed density of no more than 16 dwelling units per acre. While the proposed use would result in a higher density than what is recommended within the suburban use district, higher-density residential development should be considered in certain areas of the suburban use district where the transportation corridors and infrastructure are already established and where the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the established development pattern is outlined in Policy 2-4D of the Comprehensive Plan. As a part of the approved Hillpoint Farms Plan Development Master Plan, residential developments were limited to low-density four units per acre, medium-density six to eight units per acre, and high-density 16 units per acre. Therefore, the proposed density for parcel E would align with the maximum density permitted within the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development as a part of the master plan. Staff has evaluated this request in accordance with the guidelines and principles established within the Comprehensive Plan and offers the following. Action 2-4D of the Comprehensive Plan, considering allowing higher-density residential development than that is prescribed in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan in certain areas of the suburban use district where transportation corridors and infrastructure are already established and where the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the established development pattern. As stated, the proposed development would be located within the Hillpoint Development, which has established infrastructure and is in an existing mixed-use development consisting of a variety of commercial uses and residential uses at varying densities. Policy 6-1, encourage development of balanced and diverse housing stock throughout the city. Action 6-1A, ensure that the city land use regulations allow for a variety of housing types such as single-family attached and multifamily. As proffered, the proposed development will consist of a 75-unit multifamily residential apartment complex. The proposed apartment complex will help to provide a variety of housing stock within the Hillpoint Farms Development, which is predominantly comprised of single-family detached and detached dwellings. Action 6-1C, establish a comprehensive approach to increasing workforce housing in Suffolk and the ability of consumers to benefit from such opportunities. As proffered, the development is proposed to serve low-income residents, which are defined as households earning 80% of the average median income. Action 6-1D, develop incentives to encourage the construction of affordable housing in mixed-use communities. The proposed development would provide workforce housing for nearby retail and service uses, warehouses, and the continued Route 58 expansion and job growth opportunities. Action 6-1E, increase the supply of affordable and workforce housing in new construction and through the rehabilitation of existing homes. As previously stated, the proposed development will help lend to the workforce for current and future jobs created through the continued growth of the City of Suffolk. A conceptual plan was provided in support of the application, however, it is not proffered and may be subject to change during the site development process. The proposed conceptual layout proposes a total of 75 multifamily dwelling units on roughly 4.7 acres. The proposed buildings will consist of either three or four stories in an active open space play area. As proffered, the proposed development shall not exceed a density of 16 units per acre. Wetlands are shown to be located along the southeastern property, which could reduce the potential number of units that could be realized. In addition to the types of land use and density, the applicant has voluntarily proffered the architectural building elevations as a part of their request in order to demonstrate the quality of the project once completed. In accordance with our adequate public facility standards, no rezoning requests should be approved, which would cause a reduction in level of service standards for any public facility impacted. With regards to our water and sewer, the Department of Public Utilities has no exceptions to this request. A public facilities report was provided and demonstrated that there is adequate water and sewer levels of service and availability. With regards to stormwater management, the Department of Public Works Engineering has no objections to this rezoning. An environmental site assessment and wetlands delineation were provided as a part of this request. Additionally, the applicant has advised that construction must commence prior to July of 2024 in order to fall under the original stormwater master plan. With regards to transportation, Public Works Traffic Division has reviewed the traffic impact studies submitted with the application and associated voluntary proffers. The traffic study and associated proffers were found to be acceptable. The proposed 75 multifamily dwelling units are anticipated to generate 46 total AM peak trips and 53 total PM peak trips. The site will derive access from one point on Hillpoint Boulevard, and it is important to note that the proposed use would generate less traffic than the use that is permitted on this site as a matter of right. The subject property is currently assigned to Hillpoint Elementary School, Kingsfork Middle, and Kingsfork High School. The property is currently Zoned PD Plan Development District and designated for hotel use. Therefore, the parcel has no by right residential unit allowance. As proffered, the proposed development would yield no more than 75 multifamily dwelling units. To properly mitigate for impacts to the elementary school, the applicant would need to provide a total cash contribution of $430,806.60. This amount divided by 12 elementary school students that would be generated equates to a cost of about $35,955.0 per student, or $5,744.09 per housing unit. To properly mitigate impacts to the middle school level, the applicant would need to provide a total cash contribution of $252,393.60, which divided by six students equates to a cost of $42,065.60 per student, or $3,365.25 per housing unit. Lastly, to properly mitigate for impacts to the high school level, the applicant would need to provide a total cash contribution of $356,412.54, which divided by six students that would be generated equates to a cost of $59,402.09 per student, or $4,752.16 per housing unit. As presented, the applicant has not proposed a proffer that would mitigate impacts to the school system. Thus, as this request would result in a reduction of services to existing facilities, it fails to satisfy the requirements of Section 31-601 of the Unified Development Ordinance related to adequate public facilities. The applicant has voluntary proffered six conditions in support of this rezoning request, which are provided in detail on this slide. The first proffer outlines the maximum number of units and density that would be permitted as a part of this request. The second proffer pertains to traffic improvements that shall be done in accordance with the approved TIA. Proffer number six includes the installation of a five-foot sidewalk along Hillpoint Boulevard. Proffers three and five pertain to building materials. Specifically, as outlined in proffer number five, the finished building appearance shall be constructed in accordance with the elevation date stamped January 9, 2023. Lastly, proffer number four pertains to the affordable housing aspect. Rental fees for all units shall be affordable to households earning 80% of the area meeting income or less for a minimum of 30-year term from the date of issuance of certificate of occupancy on the property. In summary, while the application is largely found to be consistent with Unified Development Ordinance and 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the application does not comply with Section 31-601 of the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to adequate public facilities, specifically as it relates to advancing capacity for impacted schools. Thus, staff recommends denial of RZN 2022-014. It is important to note, however, the proposed use is found to be compatible with existing development patterns and uses, and as an affordable development, as proffered, addresses numerous goals contained within the Comprehensive Plan related to increasing availability of affordable housing in the City of Suffolk. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Whit Harper. I'm from Saunders and O'Heda, 705 West Washington Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Taft Mills. With me today is their president, Dustin Mills, as well as the engineer on this project, Mr. Lane. I wanted to clarify a couple things. You know, this project, and thank Ms. Collier for her summary, says that it was designed to serve those with 80% average median income. I wanted to define exactly what that is and kind of what we're looking at there. So when they say it'll be affordable to those with 80% of average median income, that's about $1,200 a month in rent. And I will say it goes, that's the height. There is a floor beneath that going down to a rent design for those making about 30%, which is around 505. My point being that this is, our apartments designed to be accessible to those who, you know, are working a hard job, particularly jobs that have been created through, you know, our newer developments here in Suffolk, and we want to make sure that they can afford to live in Suffolk. I'd also point out that as far as the proffers issue, what's set forward is approximately a little over $1 million requested for all student proffers, and Mr. Wyman certainly couldn't correct me if I'm wrong, but between all schools, that's about what we're looking at. This project in great deal relies on some state funding, and that's funding that's based off a point system. Now, the City of Suffolk's City Council, and as much as I would like Planning Commission to be able to do it, but City Council has the authority to offer incentives under their UDO, Section 31-417, to offer infrastructure fee waivers to encourage the development of affordable housing, which is exactly what this is. Under that, they can waive those fees. From a point standpoint, and Mr. Mills can speak on this a little bit further, that represents about a 29-point swing in whether or not that funding exists. It's the difference between making this a competitive project or a project that is definitely not going to get off the ground and will go to another community. Essentially, the waiver gives us an added nine points, whereas if there's a negative 20 points if we don't get that waiver. Essentially, I think the state wants to see that the community's invested in affordable housing before they invest in affordable housing. So I ask you to take all that into consideration, and Mr. Lane and Mr. Mills may want to have some clarifications there afterwards. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Harper.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to add a few things to what Mr. Harper expressed. When we found this-
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you identify yourself?
Sure. Dustin Mills with Taft Mills Group. Sorry about that. The request that we're making today, when we found this particular site, as the case states, the requirement right now for use is of a hotel property. And so we're going through the process to allow multifamily development, and our firm specializes in affordable housing. And what that means is that, as Mr. Harper had said, I'm going to start on the opposite side. So we identify developments that allow us to target 30% of area meeting income all the way up to 80% of area meeting income. And what that means in the real world is that it's individuals whose household income is typically going to be, on average, less than $60,000, and even significantly less when we target the lower-income individuals at the 30% area meeting income. It could be the individual that checks you in at the doctor's office, or the waitress, or the Amazon warehouse worker, or the EMT. And so our developments focus on providing high-quality, affordable housing for individuals that are in the workforce of the communities in which we are developing. We control architecture in-house. My firm is the architect in this development, and so in providing and proffering the renderings that we included today, we are paying close attention to what's in the community and what surrounds this particular site. This particular site, if you're not overly familiar with it, is directly in between two apartment complexes, one that's an older apartment complex, one that's a newer apartment complex. So what we're proposing is consistent with what's in the immediate area. As it pertains to the one weakness in our proposal, it's the proffering of the fees that are tied to the impact on the school system. And as Mr. Harper rightfully pointed out, that's over $1 million just in a fee-based structure. When we go to attempt to get the tax credit funding, which is a federal program that's allocated to the state level, it's a highly competitive process. They will get many more applications for tax credits than are allowed, or they have funding to be provided. So every point that we are able to obtain in the competitive process strengthens the application. And so to delve down a little bit more into the details, as Mr. Harper said, the impact of these fees, what they do, are twofold. First, if you add $1 million to proposed affordable housing development, and we submit that to the state housing agency to try to get tax credits to fund this development, we will get negative 20 points on the application because we are adding, they're trying to be efficient users of that resource. So if we add $1 million in just a fee, it's not $1 million in construction cost, or $1 million in windows, or, you know, doors, or asphalt, or anything like that, it's an actual municipal-driven fee. That reduces our application by 20 points because the agency that is having the competitive process wants to see applications that are highly efficient. In other words, they build it for a good amount, you know, a solid amount, they build a good product, but that is not over what is the average total development cost. And so that's one facet of what we're, the reason that we're trying to get the fees are allowed to be moving forward without the fees. And then if the fees are allowed not to be conveyed or proffered, the agency that allocates the tax credits looks at it as a positive way. They look at that as a contribution from the municipality, which they provide, which they look at as a positive thing. So from the competitive standpoint, not only do we not get dinged the 20 points in the competitive process that I talked about in the first facet, but in the second facet, we actually get nine points added to our application because the city is waiving those particular fees. So that's the issue that we face here, is that if we weren't able to move forward with this because of not being able to provide those proffers for the $1 million fee, we most likely wouldn't move forward with the application for tax credits. And to Mr. Harper's point, you know, that means those funds go to some other community. If we're able to move forward with this without the proffers tied to the academic fees, we still have to go through the competitive process. So that nine points is critical to our application in the competitive process. So it's a very challenging process, it's very competitive, and I'm happy to answer as many questions as you need to delve down into it. And so I'll finalize it with, again, kind of reiterating the affordable component, is that we are asking for your consideration to support approving this and recommending it to City Council at this particular time, even without it having to be able to offer the academic proffers, because we are meeting all of the other criteria. We have the support letter, no major traffic concerns, it's consistent with what is developed in the area now, and there's a tremendous need for affordable housing. So in closing, the rent structure that we have will start in the $500 range and go all the way up to a cap of $1,200. So we believe that that's critically important, 75 total units, high-quality affordable housing. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have now or in the future. Thank you.
Well, that's a question in the future. We'll ask the questions in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. The time for the proponents are over. Is there anyone in the audience that is in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk. Good afternoon, Commission, Planning Commission Commissioner. I do not live at this address. I actually live in North Suffolk. But my concern, I am imposed to this as it's proffered, and the reason is, is because of the adequate public facilities issue that the gentleman spoke about. As much as I appreciate him bringing affordable housing to Suffolk, the challenge I see is every time I come to the planning meeting or the city council meeting, we address adequate public facilities, whether it's traffic-related, or school-related, or stormwater-related. And most times, I have seen that these proposals are approved with no discussion or a denial that there's an issue with adequate public facilities, whether it be traffic or public schools, particularly, as an example, the other evening, there was a proposal put on the table for a development, and the concern of, it was the Bennett's Creek Quarters were brought up. And there was concern and discussion regarding the fact that those schools that are impacts are already overburdened with students. And the comment that was made from council was, we're not talking about adequate public facilities as it relates to schools. It's not being addressed, there's been money proffered, different things like that. Well, it wasn't proffered. It was actually taken off the table because of rezoning. The fact of the matter is, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. If you don't support the UDO as it's written, I highly suggest that you rewrite the UDO, and then it's not an issue. But as long as the UDO is in place that addresses adequate public facilities, whether it relates to public education- to public education, or whether it relates to traffic, you are required to honor it. From a legislative standpoint, if the Council wants to override that, I think they have the right to do that. But if your Planning Commission, the people that you pay to recommend what we should do with these projects says they recommend denial of this, I think you need to approve that. If not, I mean, to follow that. If you don't follow their guidance, I think you owe it to the citizens of Suffolk to tell us why you're not following that. And I see this time and time again, where the adequate public facilities issue is just glossed over, and it's become a big issue. So, therefore, again, I don't deny that this is needed in Suffolk, but in this place, for this reason, I think you should deny it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ryan, is anyone else to speak in opposition? Come up, sir.
My name's Tim Doughty. I'm Suffolk resident, reside on Indian Trail. And I rise to speak against this effort. If one was to just casually listen to the presentation we've just seen, one might think this is some altruistic effort being done in some benevolent way to assist those who seek or need low-income housing. One of the things that I didn't hear in that presentation is this entity is a nonprofit organization who is in the business of seeking to advance the interests of those folks who may be of low income, or who seek lower-cost housing. Another element that was presented there was, for approval, to make this a profitable undertaking on the part of the business entity, is that it relies on a point system, a contribution of money, or an offset of money, from either a state entity, or a City of Suffolk entity, and/or both. Now, that money, that offset, if you will, doesn't simply come out of the air, doesn't fall off a tree in the City of Suffolk or elsewhere in the state of Virginia. Ultimately, any money that is offset, that passes from one hand to another, is ultimately taxpayer funds, the taxes paid by the good folks who sit in this room today, listening to this hearing. And so, to enable this business entity to complete a profit-generating venture, they're asking for these numerous variances and allowances on the part of the City of Suffolk, and ultimately, its taxpaying citizens, to go forward with this request. So, I politely request that the Planning Commission uphold the staff's recommendation of denial, and I thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission Commissioner. I have part of my voice missing, so please forgive me. My name is Kelly Hengler, and I am-- do I have to say my address? I haven't been up in a while. I'm from Eclipse, 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. Dr. Andy Perotti could not be here, she is in Hillpoint, and she is quite not well today. She had quite a dissertation to bring forward to you when it comes to the impacts that they're already experiencing within Hillpoint. Before I get to that, I'll just add one note, that I have not heard anything come before Council or Commission, that Riverside Hospital is going to be building a microhospital on 10 and 258. Between 10 and 258 is Oakland Chucka Tuck, and when you get all the way to Hillpoint on Godwin Boulevard, you're going to begin to understand the amount of other traffic that's not being considered when it comes to putting a higher density of anything else on Godwin Boulevard. We support lower housing, you know, lower-income housing, 100%. But when it comes to the impact that exists now, someone's already spoken about the schools, so I won't bend your ear on that, and the burden to the taxpayers as well. But when it comes to what exists on Godwin Boulevard right now, and the delays that we've already seen on Shoulder Hill Row, for example, at what point in time are we going to be prepared to do a density of like-- of this on that particular location? We don't see a phasing in. We see build-it, live-on-top-of-each-other, gone quality of life, and not adequate facilities. The taxpayers are here to support our children, every child in the public schools that our dollar goes towards. But we keep hearing more and more burden. We keep hearing not good enough. And the facilities are not improving. Hillside is-- Hillpoint is a newer facility, for sure. And when it comes to that adequate facility, when it comes to the children, you will continue, please, it's your pleasure, Planning Commission, to see us come out, because our children are first. They are our future, and we want the low housing, income housing for-- and better housing. But we do not want all of that traffic coming out to the one road that comes in and out of Hillpoint, the one road that comes in and out from our school at Hillpoint, trying to combat through that child's entire career. The entire career of children has gone by, waiting for the roads, and the facilities have come by. Multiple generations of children, we're asking those young adults to come forward now, because of how inadequate the facilities are. So, we agree with the denial based on the proffers, but we also want to highlight, as Mr. Run said, the roads don't exist to keep taking the burden, so it takes from the quality of life and the safety of our children. And I thank you.
Is there anyone else in opposition? I will give the proponents five minutes for rebuttal.
Very briefly, a couple of things to clarify. You know, there was one gentleman brought up that, you know, we needed to change the UDO if we didn't like it. Well, the UDO allows for this waiver, it's specifically written into it. Another issue is the question of, you know, I understand Taft Mills isn't a nonprofit, they're not claiming to be, but I would ask this Commission and City Council down the road, how many affordable housing projects are coming forward to you? And if you think that's an altruistic, or a needed, or necessary goal for a city that needs a place for its inhabitants to live, then I think that's something you need to strongly consider, because not giving that wazer-- giving that waiver is essentially, you know, a prohibition on affordable housing, as it is in Suffolk. And finally, the issue with traffic, and I respect that concern, it's a legitimate one, but I would say this, the as-right use is a hotel. And, you know, Planning Department indicated that that would create more traffic than this would. Now, I understand there's not one now, but who's to say one doesn't come tomorrow, and you guys don't get a say on it? So, I would just point out those three things, and I think Mr. Mills has a little bit of follow-up, and I've probably taken too much of his time. Thank you.
I'll just, since the discussion initially resolved, revolved around our company, as a company, we are a for-profit company. For 26 years, I've spent my entire professional career developing affordable housing. I do it in a for-profit manner, but we have thousands of units amongst several states, Virginia included, that I have developed in, and very proud of what we have been able to accomplish. As the son of a single parent that grew up, who my mother was a teacher, who never made more than $40,000 a year in her life, I am a proud member of the affordable housing community that not only develops it, but was raised in it. And so, when I propose a development in a community, I look at the surrounding areas, I look at the fact that this is close to a hospital, I look at the fact that this is close to a stoplight intersection, I look at the fact that this particular unit, these particular units, will be surrounded by very nice, single-family homes, townhomes, apartments, and lots of amenities. And I think it's critically important to be able to provide opportunities to live in affordable housing in areas that everybody would want to live. And so, I respect the fact that we are not a nonprofit, never implied that we were, but there's no prohibition against for-profits doing good for the community. I stand by every development that we've developed, and we are proud of what we develop. And I'll just reiterate the importance of supporting this particular proposal, because Council will have their vote as well, obviously, but we would welcome the opportunity to have the support of the Planning Commission behind us, because we think this is a critically important development. And it's not that often that we have opportunities to find sites that are as well-located as this particular site and meet all the criteria that this one meets, and we would appreciate your support so that we can move forward. One thing that I didn't mention is our application deadline for those tax credits is in March, the Friday after the 15th hearing of the City Council, so we're on a little bit of a tight timeline. But we anticipate submitting that application on Friday, the 16th of March. We would know about the funding in the summer, and then it would take about six months to a year to get building permits. And so, from a impact standpoint locally, there won't be construction on the site for more than 18 to 24 months from now. So, we need every opportunity to move forward with this so that we can get these ground-- these units in the ground and serving the individuals that are in our community today. Can't say that residents won't come from out of Suffolk, but I believe personally and anecdotally, that the individuals that live in the communities often live in the community, and they're just moving into affordable housing, because either they have been priced out of the existing situation. And in a lot of cases, even though we're being asked to pay the fees, we find that many of our young residents, our children of the residents, are in that school district already, so we don't anticipate. And again, that's anecdotal, I can't offer that in a professional form, in the form of a study, but anecdotally, that is what we find in the large majority of the units that we develop. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. That concludes the time for the proponents and the opponents. I will now close the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chair, I have a-- I have a motion. I think everybody pretty much knows how I stand on affordable housing, and so this is my opportunity. It is worth $1,039,000, $1.3 million to me, for us to do this. And so, therefore, I am-- I am moving approval of RZN 2022-014.
What are the six conditions?
There are no conditions.
With a voluntary proffer.
Oh, with a proffer.
Okay, proffer, sorry. I second it. Got a second, then a mo-- a motion and a second.
And now I have a question. Now I have a question of Mr. Mills, or I think, there was a wide range here, 505 to 1,200, is that based on one and two? Was that based on income? How did you?
Yes, ma'am, I can elaborate on that, be happy to. Give me just one second. When you seek tax credits through the Virginia Housing Corporation, the tax credits, as it said earlier in the proffers, are for a 30-year period. In other words, when we receive and take those tax credits for the benefit of developing the property, we are committing that that property, for 30 years, will serve residents who are at or below 80% of area median income. However, 80% has been focused, and 30%, I mentioned earlier in my hearing. But to give clarification, we have units that are priced for folks at 30% AMI, at 50% AMI, at 60% AMI, and at 80% AMI. So, there's a wide range of rents that are available under that program. But for the life of this community, for 30 years, it will be deed restricted to-- every single unit on the property has to be 80% or below. And for the first 15 years, which is the original life of the tax credits, we have to maintain that 30, 40, I mean, 30, 50, 60, 80 range. But does that answer your question? Okay. But that's the reason why there's a span of rents. And those rents are established by the Tax Credit Agency. We don't make those rents up. We are told what the rents are at each individual income range, and so that there's no, you know, we're not saying it's $1,000 and we're going to charge $1,200. We are, you know, contractually indeed restricted to obligated to target those units at those rents.
Any other questions, Mr. Mills at the podium?
Yes, I have a question. I'm sure this isn't your first dog and pony show for these types of projects. And basically, I'll start off by saying I'm really in favor of affordable housing in particular, and I just heard this first time today early at another meeting on workforce housing, and I think that's a critical part of what all cities need to offer. In prior projects, and I presume you have done a multitude of these similar-type projects to this in other localities, how have the other localities handled the education questions that we're faced with today?
Yeah. So, it's different from municipality to municipality. I can tell you that in more communities than not, there aren't proffers, based on our experience. And I'm-- we're based in North Carolina, for example. We don't typically have proffers. There's not a pay-this-fee because of the impact on the school system. So, while I won't say that this is a unique situation, it does exist. But so, in most cases, based on our experience, there are no proffers. There are impact fees, there are, you know, water and sewer impact fees and that sort of thing, but there, in many cases, aren't specific fees that are tied to educational impact. And so, from our standpoint, it's a struggle as a developer, because like I said before, I believe that if this, once this development gets built, that I can probably do the research and find out the majority of the kids that are in that apartment complex are kids that are already in the school system. And so, when you couple that with the fact that, you know, they're-- we believe they're existing in the school system already, with the fact that we can't get these tax credits if we add $1 million on top of just a random, not a random, but a municipal-driven fee, then it's a slippery slope, in the sense that we recognize there could be impact to the school system, but we also recognize that we won't be able to make it through the competitive process if we are held to that standard. And so, what we try our best to do is deliver a product that meets as many of the criteria, which this one, particular one, does. It's just, again, missing that one thing that's tied exactly, directly to these fees. So, municipals are-- municipalities are different from city to city, state to state, but I would say that in more cases, in my experience, I've done about 5,000 units in my career under this tax credit program, but I would say 80% or more, and again, anecdotally, about 80% or more are, you know, there are no specific fees tied to school impact.
I'm follow-up of that, because I didn't hear any-- I understand that 80% of the localities don't do it, but how about the 20 that do? What was the resolution to a situation like that in prior cases?
Yeah, so typically, the ones that do, often, it's a challenge, because we're facing a, either the state competitive cycle, which is a point system. We submit an application, we say, "This is the Hillpoint site, here's what we want to build, here's what it's going to cost," and then a bunch of other stuff. We do due diligence. And it's a point system, and the highest point deal wins. And so, in certain situations, or in many situations, where a state is specifically focused on being efficient uses, an efficient user of those credits, that particular project won't be competitive, which is what we're dealing with here. There are certain states, like Maryland, for example, where in the past, they've had those type of proffers, or other type of proffers, not just educational, but they don't focus their competitive process as much on the cost associated with the projects. Deals up, as you go north, deals get more expensive to build, and so, it's the tendency of those agencies to not highly focus on the cost, because they know that, you know, high costs in those markets are a reality. So, I don't have a firm answer for your-- I understand your question, don't have a firm answer, but it's just different in each state municipality, and specific to the individual state that allocates those tax credits. The tax credit is a federal program, and it's allocated to every single state, and each state has an allocating agency that takes responsibility for that tax credit, and sets their own competitive process for allocating those tax credits. And so, from state to state, I said, we operate in three states. All three states, Maryland, Virginia, and North Carolina, all have a completely different process from state to state, as it pertains to the competitive process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a very simple question. If you do not get the points and everything going forward to get approved, or however this application process works, then what?
Yeah. So, typically, and we have the flexibility to do this for two-- Yeah. So typically, and we have the flexibility to do this for two rounds. We, we're not the landowner, we're the applicant, and we have a contract to purchase the property that if, for example, we submitted this, this round, that the deadline is on March 16th, and we found out for one reason or another, we didn't win, then we would effectively redo this application next year and try to be more competitive based on that particular year's application process. Beyond that, I'm not quite sure. We'd have to negotiate with the seller. It's not uncommon for a development not to get funded the first time around. I've got lots of examples of where we've done it, you know, twice, three times. By the third or fourth time, the, the land seller usually gets impatient and, you know, wants to go a different route. But I think the, the quick answer is if it doesn't get funded this round, we would resubmit and hope for better results the following year.
Second question. This particular piece of property was zoned in an area without capacity in the elementary, middle school and high school areas. Was there any property, and I guess when you did the survey of everywhere, where you had an area that could have satisfied this application and had capacity in all three school zones?
We weren't able to identify one that met that criteria.
Make sure I understand what I heard.
I'm sorry.
I said, I want to make sure I understand what I heard. So it, there's very few places in the city, if you would have seeked the same application, where you, you would not have ran into this same problem.
When we look, when we look at for sites within a municipality, we reach out to brokerage, the brokerage community, we reach out to individual land sellers, we look at signs. It's a delicate balance because I'm not going to tell you that there aren't sites that are in areas where the schools are underserved or under capacity, excuse me. But we also have to meet a lot of other criteria that are tied to the competitive process. So I always say it's kind of a, you know, a needle in a haystack to find a site that meets the agency's criteria, that has zoning, but that also has all the, the things that you need to do to make a, a community like this successful. And what I mean by that is what I, what I alluded to earlier, which is, you know, close access to medical facilities and amenities and that sort of thing. So it typically, the reason that schools are overburdened is because they're located in areas that are highly populated. If they're highly populated, it's because they're desirable areas to live. And I go back to my, my initial statement where I said that we, we like this location for all the reasons that everybody else likes this location and chose to purchase a home there or a townhome or have chosen to live in the apartments that exist there.
I want to say this this way. Because if we rezone this particular piece of property and the application does not go through, we've just rezoned 75 apartments on this piece of property, right?
Yes, with the proffers is voluntarily proffered by the applicant, which makes it a conditional rezoning at that point.
It, it, it's our understanding that our proffers are specific to our particular proposal. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but anything that would come in the future that would not be our application would have to go through the same process. That's how I understand it.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and one of our-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Say that slow for my grandma. My grandma listening. She might not, I'm serious. She might not have caught that. Say that one more time.
Yeah. So it's our understanding that the proffers that we offer are specific to our request. We're, we're the applicant. And one of our proffers, for example, and uh-
I, I think to clarify, and Mr. White can tell me if I'm wrong here. Plan can tell me wrong. It would be with our proffers. And one of those proffers, I think it was the third one specifically said that it would be to serve families at 80% of the average median income. So the affordability aspect would remain tacked to the land is my understanding.
Yeah.
That's correct.
That is correct. That is, that, that's the difference between a straight, non-conditional rezoning versus a conditional rezoning in which you are considering now. It comes with the proffers.
That's why I asked the question.
All right.
I want to ask this again and make sure I understand the application, I mean the motion that we have. And this is without the proffers, right?
With the proffered conditions.
With the conditions.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the school proffer money. That's, that's not part of this, right?
Oh, no, it's not.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's just that list of five that-
As I, like I say, I'm, I'm asking these questions for my grandmother. She's watching. All right. Thank you. I'm, I'm good. But I do have one more question, but, but not four.
Any other questions? Okay.
I have a, Mr. Chairman, I, I've got a, I've got a comment, I guess, more than anything else about this. You know, this is a, this is really a difficult decision because I think everybody is in, in favor of affordable housing. And it would seem to me, we've got a, a lot of properties that, you know, would be able to be used, but not this one. But getting back to the history of this thing, and this is under the UDO, the development is capped at 1,813 residential units and to date, a total of 1,0786. This is a rehash of what we just heard, which is a difference of 27 units. What we're talking about is adding 75 apartments. To me, that's kind of getting around, you know, the, I know these are single family units, but to me, it looks like we're kind of skirting the main issue about this. The other part about this, and the big part, is that, is the schools. Every one of those schools are overcrowded right now. And that's why the, the proffers amounting to a little over a million dollars was not considered. And certainly we're not requiring anything like that. However, you know, in the whole scheme of thing, a million dollars, when you're, when we're talking about adding schools, which are tens of millions of dollars these days, or additions to, to schools, $1 million is not, is just a very small part of what we're talking about, unfortunately. But, but that, that's why I was a little confused about why, you know, without that. And again, Mr. Mills, I come from, my, my mother was a teacher, my wife was a teacher. And so I've, I hear this, you know, I've heard this my, all my life about, you know, the numbers of, of kids in classrooms and that, and that sort of thing. If you ever have an overcrowded classroom, and I went through schools like that, it's very difficult for a teacher to be able to manage, manage classes, you know, a lot of class, a lot of pupils in classes. And so really for that reason alone, and I understand that maybe cities can, can get around that part of it by other ways of creating taxes and things like that. But for this particular piece of property, I, I just, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm really at a, at a real confused part of this thing because, again, getting back to the affordable housing issue, we'd need it. We've got growth, you know, commercial growth in and around that area. But there's an issue about the roads, the capacity of, of those roads all the way out to Chucka Tuck. I, you know, I, I, I just don't know. I, that's all, that's my comment. And that's, that's where I'm kind of hung up on it.
Thank you, Mr. Creemar. I think Mr. Edwards had a question.
Yeah, I guess this is for Ms. Collier. Can, on page four, it had policy 2-4 promote compatibility and land use patterns. And I'm just, I was reading over the action and it was saying how in the suburban use district, you, you know, you allow higher densities. Now, let, let me, let me ask this question. In the suburban districts, something like this, how many, how many units would usually be allowed on this property?
No, you're fine. Uh, one to five units per acre.
And this one with, the way it's been written, because this action, what, what is it now? Make sure that I get clarification.
What are they requesting or what?
Yeah, yeah.
So they're requesting a density of no more than 16 dwelling units per acre.
That's, that's higher.
Mm-hmm.
That's higher. Okay. Thank you. That's all I needed to hear.
Ms. Collier.
Yes.
Question. Do we know, does traffic engineering, is traffic engineering, do, do they know anything about the impact that this, this unit, these sets of units will have on Godwin Boulevard in, in that area?
Um, so I know that TIA was submitted and that the proposed use would generate less traffic than the by right use of a hotel. Any other impacts? I can refer to either Jason or Robert.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Jason Sowers with Traffic Engineering.
Hi, yes. Just, just wondering about that, just that little, that little area, how, what, what impact will not be in a hotel, but being apartment building, well, how, how would that impact?
We still ran a full TIA on this op, on this application. Even though it is generating less traffic than what could be generated by right, we still look at, at the existing conditions and put in that traffic that would be generated by this particular use. And all the, both of the signalized intersections there at Hillpoint North and Hillpoint South, both continue to operate at an acceptable level of service of C or better.
That's, that's Hillpoint North, Hillpoint South and Hillpoint Boulevard. I'm thinking about two blocks over at Godwin, on Godwin.
I'm talking about Godwin Boulevard and Hillpoint North.
Oh, you're talking about all three of them.
Godwin Boulevard and Hillpoint South, both of those signalized intersections.
Oh, okay.
As well as the non-signalized intersection of Hillpoint Boulevard and Hillpoint Road.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks.
So everything continues to operate at an acceptable level of service.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm, I'm looking, you, you can go.
Okay.
You can go. Now, I was, I was just sitting here thinking how many buses stop at a hotel every day to pick up children who can't really afford a house. Put a hotel there and then they could move into that hotel.
Then it's by right.
By right. So is it better to put a, put affordable, affordable housing there, give them a place to live, so you'll know who's there, more so than buses stopping at hotels? And they're stopping there. There's people are staying in hotels because they can't afford to stay. There are not enough houses or they can't afford to stay anywhere else. So I wish this was a perfect world. I'm serious. I was just sitting here thinking, I wish this was a perfect world. Then individuals in the blue shirts wouldn't have a problem. Nobody would have no problems. But this is not a perfect world. We have to make ways for those who don't have. A lot of us have, but there's others who have not. And I, I can, I can appreciate yours concern. But sometimes it becomes selfish and it's not really about people. We'll make, we'll, we'll build buildings for, for pets and everything. I leave it at that. It's how I'm personally to meet on it. Mr. Chairman. Started with Sunday.
We're going to take them offering that.
I want to, I want to say this. I like to be consistent with whatever we vote on. And I think every applicant should have a reasonable understanding that we're going to look at things based off the comprehensive plan, based off the UVO and call balls and strikes. So I do understand the frustration in the community. We do have a serious problem with school capacity and infrastructure and rules. And I think they've been very well documented. I think if anybody's been to the comprehensive plan work sessions that we've had, I think it's loud and clear. However, we are dealing with a specific rezoning. And this rezoning has given us kind of a buffer and a out because, again, I want to make sure we had clarification on this. That if we rezoned this piece of property, it cannot just be rezoned and moved to do whatever you want. It's restricted, if I'm, if I make sure I understand, to just affordable housing. So we're just not rezoning something and saying we can rezone it and it can be whatever. Somebody, if it doesn't work out, somebody can come and do something else. No, we have a covenant. And I guess, I guess this is the irony of the entire situation as I sit back and listen. An application on affordable housing can't afford a million dollar proffer. Because if they would have just given the million dollars, they said they would have lost points and the rest. So an application for affordable housing can't afford the proffer. Because if, according to, if you read the report, and I say this to the, um, city, city staff, this was the greatest breakup letter I ever read, man. It was denied, but the way it was denied was so beautifully written. And so, I mean, I wish my girlfriends would have learned how to write letters like y'all because I mean, I didn't feel bad about getting denied this way. But again, let me get back to earth. This is a rezoning for a particular piece of property. It has a covenant and we're not going to have affordable housing, opportunities for affordable housing in the city if we're not going to give those people who bring these applications a opportunity to pass or fail. And I think it's high time and we have an opportunity to let them fail. So you put the application in and it doesn't work out, we have a piece of property here that has opportunity. And the next person who comes in can say, I can come right here on this piece of property and try it. Now, we have a problem with the rezoning and, and the rest of the school district, that's a school board problem. And that's where this anger and this conversation needs to go, needs to go to the school board. Because they're the ones that designed the lines of where kids are going to school at. And so again, we're in the middle of that fight. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to hit this red button.
For the question.
There's no other discussion? Mr. Wyman, your call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Please vote. Yep, there we go. All right. Uh, the motion is approved by a vote of six to zero. I'm sorry, six to one.
Okay.
I'm bad.
Congratulations, Mr. Mills. This will go to city council on March 15th with a recommendation for approval from this body. Okay. The next item on our agenda today is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-023, Willroy Road Solar Facility. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Uh, yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-023, Willroy Road Solar Facility, submitted by Michael Barkowski, Community Power Group LLC, applicant on behalf of Solinus LLC, property owner, in accordance with sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located on Willroy Road, zoning map 26 parcel 28. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress voting borough, zone M2 heavy industrial zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the central growth area, rural conservation use district. Oh, sorry. That is not correct. It is not rural conservation use district. This is suburban use district. My apologies. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to city council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-023. Staff planner Joshua Bateman will present staff's report.
Good afternoon. I'm Josh Bateman, the principal planner here with the city planning department. And I'm going to apologize in advance. If you try to say Willroy Road five times really fast, you'll realize what I'm apologizing for in advance. It's a bit of a tongue twister. So if I flub that, please forgive me. So as Mr. Wy noted, this is a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility known as the Willroy Road Solar Facility on a portion of tax parcel 2628, which is zone M2, on the west side of Willroy Road, near the Nansman Parkway intersection. The total acreage of the subject parcel is approximately 115 acres. The subject parcel is located at the very edge of the central growth area in the suburban use district. So the subject parcel has frontage on Willroy Road, which is considered a SCOD road. So the subject parcel has frontage on Willroy Road, which is considered a SCOD road. The parcel, as you can see from this map, is split zoned. The portion where the proposed solar facility is going is Zoned M2. The rest of the parcel is Zoned OI, which is the Office Institutional District. So to the north and west, you have the remaining portion of the property, which is Zoned OI, which is currently an agricultural field, farm field. And you have agriculture and residential properties, which are Zoned RE to the north, as well as you can see there in that image. But they lie on the opposite side of that existing lake that flows into the Nansman River. To the south is a crop field occupying parcel 271C, which has more frontage on Willroy Road and is also Zoned M2, as well as Long Point Lane, which was a private road serving two single-family residences. To the east is an automotive repair garage and undeveloped property that is Zoned B2 on the opposite or southeast side of Willroy Road. The proposed use is a three-megawatt AC solar facility occupying approximately 19 and a half acres of that larger 115-acre tract in the M2 District. Proposed equipment consists of a single-axis tracker racking system, panels mounted on that, inverters, a transformer, underground onsite transmission lines, a paved commercial entrance leading to a gravel access driveway, which has an emergency vehicle turnaround at the end of it, and security fencing and landscaping for screening. The facility will generate electricity sufficient to power approximately 1,000 homes annually. The facility will be remotely monitored and will not require any onsite staff. Power generated by the facility is anticipated to be sold to Dominion Virginia Energy. So the application is, as I noted earlier, confined to the portion of the property that is Zoned M2 that you see there, wherein solar energy facilities are considered a conditional use. Access to the facility is by way of a farm road that is existing that crosses tax map 271C, as you see there. I've added some labels to kind of make that a little easier to observe. That property is also owned by the same owner, which is Solenus. To the north of the project site is a crop field, and then there's a mixed hardwood forest that surrounds this impounded tributary of the Nansman River. Those wooded areas are considered resource protection area. The property is located within the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area. The site, however, of the proposed solar facility is in the Resource Management Area, not in the RPA buffer. The streams feeding the system are considered wetlands, and the adjacent wooded areas, as I indicate, are resource protection area. The extents of these features were confirmed by a 2022 wetland delineation conducted by the firm MSA. So both the, the subject parcel and the adjacent parcel that the access road crosses were the subjects of a conditional use permit application in 2021 for an identically sized solar facility, which was known as Solenus Solar, CUP 2021-11. This plan that you see before you is from that concept plan. The concept plan you see shows the orientation and configuration of that project on those two parcels. That application was denied by the City Council on August 18th, 2021. And the reason why I've included it here in the presentation for this particular project is the, the solar facility that is being proposed here today is identical in size, but very different in configuration and setback distance. So what I've done is I've lined up these next two slides so that as I alternate between the two, you can see how the solar facility, or rather, the layout of that facility changes on the subject parcel. So essentially what it does is it rotates about 90 degrees to the northeast or counterclockwise. And both of these concept plan, plans show not only Willroy Road as it exists today, but as it's proposed to be realigned as part of a planned construction project that will change the way the intersection of Willroy and Nansman, how those two roads come together. So on to this project. So the fenced-in area and closing the panels comprises roughly 19.5, 19.6 acres. A 50-foot buffer is required per our UDO whenever a solar facility abuts a residential use or residential zoning district, which this part, this parcel, the larger parcel, does lie adjacent to residential zoning to the northwest, north and northeast. The facility is approximately 820 feet from the nearest residence, and that's the one on Long Point Lane there. It is screened from view from the adjacent residential neighborhood. The closest residential neighborhood is to the north across that wooded area, and it's screened from that by that RPA buffer, that, that mature forest that, that is acting as a buffer currently. The exist, the eastern edge of the facility, it will be located about 310 feet at its closest point to the future alignment of Willroy Road, not the present alignment of the road. So that edge right there, just that runs roughly parallel, the eastern edge of the facility, is approximately anywhere between 310 feet at its closest point or about 388 feet at its, at its farthest point from the future alignment of Willroy Road. Proposed screening will consist of the staggered double row of evergreen trees, which is required by the ordinance. And then also because Willroy Road is considered a SCOD road, there's a second buffer that will be required directly adjacent. And you can see those two different buffers on your screen there. See if I can get the laser pointer to come up. So that's, that's the first buffer, the SCOD buffer, and then this buffer, this screening buffer here is the required visual screening. So per the SCOD requirements, that's consists of a 15-foot planting strip consisting of two-to-three-inch diameter trees. They can be deciduous trees, planted either 20-foot on center or 40-foot on center, depending on if they're medium or large trees. And then the, the screening requirement is that staggered double row of evergreen trees directly adjacent to the fence line. A single paved entrance will be put in to city-of-suffic traffic standards for the actual apron, and then that transitions to a gravel access driveway to provide access, mostly for construction traffic. These facilities, as we noted in the previous presentation last month, don't receive a lot of permanent traffic. Something like once a week is about the most you'll ever see, unless there's a problem and then that, let's hope that doesn't happen. Traffic access in the facility will be restricted to Willroy Road to and from the Route 58 bypass, and that's because that Nansman Parkway contains a through truck restriction. So traffic had expressed concerns about that, accessing the site from the north via Nansman Parkway. So just to give you a heads up, the, the Route 58 bypass is about 1.3 miles to the south. And so, as you'll see in the recommended conditions, staff is recommending that we limit construction traffic to that route from the south. So a WQIA was provided as required for properties in the CP, CBPA. Its descriptions of the anticipated increase in site imperviousness, as well as the hydrologic impacts of the solar facility, are consistent with the recent change in how Virginia DEQ views the impervious nature of the solar panels for runoff calculation purposes. Wetlands on the subject parcel were delineated by MSA as shown on the concept plan. There are no direct impacts to wetlands, so we're not talking about any direct wetland impacts like fills or, or anything like that. And there was also an environmental site assessment, a phase one done for this site prior to, or in the last year, which found no evidence of recognized environmental conditions or contamination presently on the property. One of the reasons why this project took a little bit of time to come before you is because the applicant prepared these, or had a consultant prepare these photo simulations that you're about to see. And to my, it was kind of an interesting exercise because usually you do these photo simulations to site conditions as they appear today. Well, they had to actually simulate the new roadway when it gets built and how that's gonna look. So that took a little bit more time and a little bit more expertise, but I think the, what came out of that, these photo simulations are actually pretty good. So this first one shows the view as you see it today in the upper left, headed northeast on Willroy, and you see the existing little farm road entrance there, and that's the configuration of the present road. If you see the image on the lower right, if you can just barely kind of make out there that the road kind of heads off to the left, that's because that's how that road is being reconfigured. And you see the commercial entrance and the gravel roadway there that will provide the primary access to the site. In the second image, you see the facility from the edge of the future roadway and solar facility traveling southbound on Willroy Road. So this is headed southbound on the new alignment of Willroy Road. To your left, you can just make out the intersection with Nansman Parkway. So that's what you're seeing is the SCOD buffer on your immediate right, the trees planted 20 feet on center, and you see what kind of looks almost like an evergreen forest to your right. That's the visual screen that's required for solar facilities. And then the third image, which was very useful, shows, attempts to show the, the view of what you'll see from that overpass on Nansman Parkway over top of the railroad track. So you're looking down at the intersection with Willroy Road, the SCOD buffer, and off to your left, you can see the solar facility located behind the staggered double row of evergreen trees. There is a piece of this existing wooded RPA buffer that sort of will help conceal part of the solar facility at the extreme northeast corner, and I think this visual image captures that pretty well. So we also had the applicant do a truck haul exhibit just to show that the, the planned truck route is from the bypass, not from points north and east on Nansman Parkway. So that's what that exhibit shows. And we did, as with all these applications, have our relevant departments that are involved in the review, review the project and comment. There are no public utilities, meaning water or sewer, for this proposed use, so the Department of Public Utilities had no objections to the, to the application. The Department of Public Works Engineering evaluated the conceptual design of the, of the, of the solar facility relative to the stormwater management facilities. That all gets designed and those facilities get sized at the time of site plan submittal, and those, they'll be held to the water quality and quantity requirements of the Virginia Stormwater Management Act in place at that time. Traffic Engineering did express concerns about the potential use of Nansman Parkway to access the site from the north, which does contain a through truck restriction, as I mentioned. The Division recommended approval of the project subject to the two conditions set forth in this presentation, which I'll read here in a moment, regarding the vehicle entrance and the truck haul route. And staff's evaluation of the application relative to the conditional use permit criteria, the standards of the UDO specific to solar energy facilities, as well as the requirements in the M2 District generally, are all detailed in the staff report. And they, they include also an evaluation against the performance standards. You'll hear me read in a moment a condition about noise. It's not that we expect this to be a loud or a, a use that's gonna exceed the, the performance standards for noise in the UDO. It's that we're being extremely cautious to make sure that, that they are well below the levels, the maximum limits prescribed in the zoning ordinance. If you recall last month, you all heard a solar facility that was about, or maybe it was two months ago, a solar facility that's about 600 feet from the nearest residence. And if you remember what those decibel levels were, this is about 800 feet. So we expect there to be even less noise emitted by this facility. But staff's recommendation is for approval with the conditions outlined below, to mitigate the potential for negative impacts to the public health, safety and welfare. To spare me having to read those to you again, I'll go ahead and do that. They're essentially the same exact conditions that were recommended for the Indian Trail Solar Projects last month, with the exception of there's no condition recommended to preserve that wooded forest, existing forested area surrounding the facility, and that's because it's already protected as resource protection area, so no one can just go in and clear that anyway. But otherwise, the conditions are exactly the same. And at the end of the public hearing, if you have any questions, planning commissioners, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
Thought I forgot my glasses there for a second. My name's Mike Barkowski. I was here before this board a year ago. I actually didn't need my glasses a year ago. So I, we, we came before this board and, and before the council last year, they had a variety of recommendations for us. We did not probably properly ask for a deferral to make those changes. Therefore, we waited a year to be able to come back to the council. We made those changes, plus some, as we reached out to the community and, and just got feedback on the solar facility and what was best, and that's, I think, why you see such a drastic change. And we have another presenter coming up here in a minute to talk about it. And so we're, we're not asking for a rezoning, as was previously mentioned in a really good discussion. This is an M2 zone already. Solenus, which is a chemical facility just to the southwest of this plant. You know, there's a lot of uses for this property. You can have animal, animal processing, manufacturing plants, heavy equipment, industrial storage, research and development laboratories, et cetera. We thought, and Solenus felt, that this would be a really great use for this property. If any one of those facilities go in there, that farmland's gone forever. The solar facility goes in there in 35 years, who knows? Maybe it's solar, maybe it's farmland again. But we did redesign it so that all along that front of that road, it doesn't limit future development opportunities. We kept enough space open. We did present something inside of our package, how you could potentially have all sorts of different retail, community center and other types of facilities in front of there. And then we strategically kind of left it open in the back, so that is, has a different zoning for office buildings and the likes, and those types of things can still go there. It's such a, a large parcel at almost 140 acres, you, we're only using a small piece of that right in the middle. So it really allows for future development opportunities, if that's something that the council and Solenus would like to do. But in the meantime, this was a really good use of that property, or so people have felt. And we also, as was previously mentioned, by changing the orientation of facility, not only did we open up future development opportunities, but we moved it further away from residences as well. So we felt that that was a, a really good and thoughtful change. And so that was really the introduction I wanted to give, as the person who presented this last year won't belabor the great presentation that came before us, and we have our senior project manager that will maybe give you a little bit more detail as well. So, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone on the commission. My name is Amber Lee Young. I'm a project manager at Community Power Group. So Mr. Barkowski, as well as Mr. Bateman, has already provided a lot of detail on this project, so I'll just provide a few more points about our redesign, as well as the additional due diligence that we've done as part of this, as part of this application. So as has been already mentioned, this project has been relocated as far back on the, as possible on the site within the heavy industrial zoning allowance. So it's now set back more than 300 feet from the future orientation of Willroy Road. So not only will there be a double staggered row of vegetative buffer over 200 screening trees will be installed, there'll be an additional row of street trees along the future Willroy Road that was requested, and we've already coordinated that with the planning staff and public works. We will also be installing a fire hydrant along Willroy Road at the suggestion of the fire department in order to bring Willroy Road up to current fire standards, as there's currently too much space between existing fire, fire hydrants, so we'll be installing an additional one adjacent to the entrance of this project. Similar to last year's application, we will be utilizing game fencing or agricultural fencing instead of a chain link fence around this project. We feel that it's significantly more aesthetically pleasing and consistent with the neighborhood character as opposed to a chain link fence. We are also proposing vegetative-friendly ground cover in the form of a wildflower and grass seed mix to go underneath the project. Studies have shown that, or what, or, sorry, pollinator-friendly ground cover reduces groundwater, or sorry, reduces groundwater discharge, increases groundwater recharge, and provides a greater reduction in soil erosion than traditional farming as it currently exists. So this project will reduce runoff from the parcel, which currently includes fertilizers, other chemicals from the agricultural use, from entering the Nansman River, and be a net environmental benefit to the surrounding area. As has been discussed, we've already coordinated with the Traffic Engineering Department regarding our construction haul route to the south of the site, and we'll be installing a concrete apron. As was mentioned, the only traffic to this project will be for periodic maintenance, so that will include mowing during the summer months, as well as any technical maintenance that's required. So this project is located in a heavy industrial zone, surrounded by a chemical manufacturing plant, automated repair shop, as well as other agricultural uses. We don't expect the noise generated from this project to be significant at all for any, any surrounding uses, as the noise will only occur when the facility is operational during the day, and will be competing the day, and will be competing with traffic noise, as well as noise already generated from the neighboring industrial uses. We will also be using anti-reflective coating to effectively eliminate all risks of glare from this project. So in order to support that point, we did numerous glare studies for this project, not only from the existing roadways, but the proposed flyover, as well as surrounding homes. In our studies utilizing the industry's best standard of glare studies, we detected no potential glare for the project, not only from this existing roadways, but as well as from the apex of the flyover, so the top point of the flyover, we did not predict any glare from this project. This is largely due from the fact that the closest solar panel will be over 1,000 feet away from this point and behind two layers of vegetative screening, in addition to the effects of the anti-reflective coating that we plan to install for this project. So overall, we feel that this solar facility will be a great neighbor within the confines of the heavy industrial use district. Another important aspect of this project is our decommissioning plan. So it's very standard practice for Community Power Group to provide a financial security for this project for the benefit of the city, so that in the event that the facility ceases operations and we do not live up to our obligation of removing it, the city will have existing funds in place in order to complete that removal. We've coordinated that decommissioning amount based on industry studies, as well as with the Weld and Cooper Center, which is a policy research institute at the University of Virginia. This project will also contribute tax revenue to the city of Suffolk through our participation in the voluntary revenue sharing program established for solar facilities, which is at a rate three times more than if this facility participated in the standard machinery and equipment tax rate. So this revenue sharing program is equal to $1,400 per megawatt, escalating every five years, and so we'll be participating in that program. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Is that, are you speaking in favor?
Yes, sir.
Come up, Ms. Ryan.
Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard. I actually support this project. I think it's a good place for it, based on the proposal that's in front of us. It does not affect public education. As someone who used to be a public education teacher, I appreciate that. I do live in that area, though, and I just have a couple of requests that, based on the proposal, that some mechanism is put in place to ensure that the trucks follow this route, because the truck traffic in that area is a disaster, and it's not regulated at all. Even though those roads, some of those roads, as you know, Ms. Hicks, you have said this before, you live on that off Nansman Parkway, although those roads are truck restricted in many areas, there's no enforcement of that law. So please consider that, not to deny this application, just to make sure that the law is followed. That's all I'm asking, because we don't need any more trucks coming through Nansman Parkway. Okay? So, but I think, and the other thing I would just put out there, and I know I've got 29 seconds here, is that regardless of the color shirt I wear, I speak what I feel is important to the citizens of Suffolk, not to create chaos for everybody. Okay? It's just what I think is right, based on the research that I do, and I do do my research. So that being said, please ensure that everyone understands the best they can about solar projects, because there was a lot of consternation from council at the meeting last week regarding two proposals that was put in front of it. And that poor gentleman who owned that property, I felt so bad for him, because one was denied and one was approved, but that poor gentleman, what he went through up there, I just don't want to see any of these people go through that same thing. So please, if you're going to approve this, make sure you have some discussions with council regarding why it's a good thing, because I'd hate to see them go in front of council like that Mr. Johnson, I think it was, went in front of him last week. That was awful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. That concludes the time for the proposals. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition? Seeing none. Mr. Borkowski, you have any other additional comments you'd like to make? There's no rebuttal, but you have additional comments? You have five minutes?
No, sir. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you much. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
I have a question. The decommissioning plan, I didn't see that in the packet, and it said refer to Section J. I'm assuming that the city, that you guys did review that, and it met all the standards. I wouldn't know what to, I was looking at it, if it was me, but I just wanted to make sure that was...
It should be included in the project narrative. Minor standing on this one. Sometimes applicants include in the project narrative as an appendix, sometimes they don't, sometimes it's a standalone attachment. But regardless, at the conditional use permit, it's just a plan. We just want to see that they have a plan to decommission the facility at the end of its useful life, and it's when we get to site plan for these things that we make sure that we get the necessary agreements in place, the performance agreement, and that decommissioning bond, the surety, is critical. So...
I think I was just missing a few pages.
Check page six of 19.
It's also on page three of nine, under considerations.
Right. I was just looking at the top of seven of 19, where it says see Section J of this narrative for the...
Any other questions, Mr. Bateman? Is that the desk, at the podium? Thank you, Mr. Bateman. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of CUP 2022-023, with conditions.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that the first thing I did when I saw this was coming back before us was to kind of go back and look and see what was there. And my first question was, you know, what's the big change? What's the changes? What's different than it was last time? And there are substantial changes and improvements to this over what we saw the last time, so I'm much more comfortable with this one than I was the last one.
Thank you, Mrs. Steller. Okay, Ms. Wyman, your call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Borowski has the approval of this body. It will go to City Council with a motion for approval on March 15th, next month. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-026, 1816 Cotton Farm Road. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-026, 1816 Cotton Farm Lane, submitted by Sean Breland, Breland Builders, applicant on behalf of Richard and Sandra Waters, property owners, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31701B13 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling unit detached on property located at 1816 Cotton Farm Lane, zoning map 5*3, parcel 5. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chukatuck Voting Borough, zoned RL, residential low-density zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the rural conservation use district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-026. Staff planner Shannon Wolf will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this CUP is to establish a detached accessory dwelling unit. The property is located in the rural conservation use district outside of the city's growth area. The property is roughly one acre in size and is zoned residential low-density. To the north, south, and west of the property area are single-family dwellings, also zoned RL, and to the east is an undeveloped property zoned residential estate district. The property, the proposed detached accessory dwelling unit will be located in the rear of the property, as shown. The accessory dwelling unit, as proposed, complies with all the required setbacks for the RL zoning district. The applicant is proposing to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit consisting of 998 square feet to be used as a poolhouse and an in-law suite. On properties that contain a principal dwelling unit of more than 2,000 square feet, an accessory dwelling unit cannot contain more than 1,000 square foot of gross floor area. Due to the size of the main dwelling being approximately 2,500 square feet, and the accessory dwelling unit being less than 1,000 square feet, this criteria has been met. The accessory dwelling unit will be required to connect to the existing septic and well used by the main dwelling. Authorization and/or permitting will be required from the Department, the Virginia Department of Health. For any modifications to these systems, which staff will verify prior to any building permits. The supplied survey demonstrates that there will be adequate parking for current and proposed use in the existing driveway. The proposed accessory dwelling unit consists of a great room, a kitchen, a bedroom, an office, and one and a half bathrooms. Staff has evaluated the proposed use for consistency with the criteria set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance, and finds that this conditional use permit meets those criteria as described in the staff report. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is suitable for the size and location of the subject property at 1816 Cotton Farm Lane. The accessory dwelling unit will not be rented out and is not expected to negatively impact the surrounding community. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-026 with the conditions outlined in staff report and the attached resolution. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience in opposition? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of CUP 2022-026 with the conditions. Four.
Any discussion on the motion? Wyman, would you call for the vote?
Sir. Second, here we go. Our commissioners, please vote. Here we go. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
I'd like to make a statement, Mr. Richard and Sandra Waters. We have a favorable request from this body, and it will go to City Council on March 15th with a motion for approval. The next item on our agenda is conditional use request, CUP 2022-027, Sadler Truck Parking Lot. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-027, Sadler Truck Parking Lot, submitted by Karen Bagnall, VHB agent, on behalf of Herman Sadler, CHN LLC, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, in order to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a truck stop slash travel plaza on property located on Holland Road, zoning map 32B, parcel 3, star 1, star 2, star 33B. The purpose of this request is to grant a shift in the on-site location, an increase in size and intensity pertaining to the development of Sadler Truck Plaza, CUP 2017-007. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zoned M1 light industrial zoning district and B2 general commercial zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the central growth area suburban use district. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-027. Once again, staff planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this request is to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a truck stop travel plaza known as the Sadler Truck Parking Lot. Previously, a conditional use permit, CUP 2017-007, was granted in June of 2017 for this parcel to allow for a truck stop travel plaza to include the construction of a convenience store and fueling station. One of the approved conditions stated that no overnight parking or idling truck would be permitted on site. The subject parcel is presently zoned in M1 light industrial zoning district, B2 general commercial zoning district, and is located within the special corridor overlay district. To the north of the property, you have the ongoing Port Logistics Center. To the south of the property, you have the Westport Commerce Center, as well as some B2 commercial uses, and to the east of the property, you have some rural residential vacant land, and to the west of the property, you have some B2 commercial zoning district and vacant land as well. The parcel is approximately 30 acres and consists of the Sadler Truck Center, convenience store, and fueling station, which you see in this image here. The applicant proposes to amend the previously approved CUP in order to remove the condition that no overnight parking or truck idling be permitted on the site. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to construct a tractor-trailer parking lot to allow parking for up to 431 trucks. The parking lot will be constructed within the M1 zone portion of the parcel and will include overnight truck parking to serve the existing truck stop travel plaza. The applicant stated that the purpose of the requested additional truck parking is to reduce congestion surrounding the Sadler Truck Center and to provide a safer area for trucks to rest while traveling along Route 58, Holland Road. Additionally, the applicant stated that the trucks are currently parking along Ace Drive, which was not designated for truck parking, and within the travel plaza parking lot where the passenger vehicles and many pedestrians in conflict with maneuvering of large trucks. You can see in the images here where some of the trucks are parking within the passenger car parking areas. The proposed parking lot will be open to the public and will hopefully reduce the current safety concerns on site. The proposed tractor-trailer parking lot will utilize one entrance off of Ace Drive that will serve as an ingress and egress. Additionally, there will be a right-in-only access off of Route 58, Holland Road. As a part of the condition of approval, the parking lot must be designed in substantial conformance with the site plan attached as Exhibit C within staff's report, and will be required to meet the minimum lighting standards outlined in Section 31-604 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Additionally, the site must comply with the development criteria for the special corridor overlay district. Most notably, the parking lot must be screened from the public right-of-way of Route 58, Holland Road. A major water quality impact assessment was provided as a part of this request. The subject parcel contains approximately 14 acres of wetlands, of which approximately six acres are proposed to be impacted. As a part of the development plan review process, the applicant will be required to submit an updated wetlands delineation, and approval permitting will need to be obtained from the Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Environmental Quality for the proposed impacts to the existing wetlands. This information will be required prior to the approval of any site plan. The Department of Public Utilities has reviewed this request and expressed no objections to the proposed use. The Department of Public Works Traffic Division reviewed the application and had no objections to the proposed use. The applicant has submitted a truck route mapping exhibit to demonstrate the commercial vehicles to and from the site will utilize roads designed to accommodate such traffic. The exhibit shows that from the east, trucks will access the site from Route 58, Holland Road, and Route 13, Carolina Road, and from the western Ruatan Boulevard and Route 58, Holland Road. A traffic impact memorandum was supplied by the applicant to provide a summary of potential traffic impacts to Route 58, Holland Road, Manning Bridge Road intersection. The memorandum states that since the travel center has opened, tractor-trailer parking has exceeded the available spaces within the facility, and the truck drivers are parking tractor-trailers along the shoulders of adjacent roads and within adjacent neighborhood streets. The proposed parking will serve to reduce the amount of congestion surrounding the existing travel center and adjacent roadways. A conditional use permit recognizes uses that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning district as a matter of right. districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through an approval of a CUP when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found to be acceptable. I will touch base on a few of those, however each one is outlined in staff's report. The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The proposed tractor-trailer parking area will be located within the M1 district and will serve the existing truck stop/ travel plaza. The subject parcel is surrounded on the north by Port Logistics Center, which contains established distribution and warehouse centers. Additionally, to the south is the Westport Commerce Park, which will house distribution and warehouse centers. The proposed use is compatible with the predominant character of the uses in the immediate vicinity. Additionally, as previously stated, as the parcel is located within the Special Corridor Overlay District, the parking lot will be required to be screened from public right-of-way of Route 58, Holland Road. This will help to ensure that proposed use does not adversely affect the character of the surrounding uses and/or affect the public view from the Route 58, Holland Road corridor. The proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, or smoke or gas. The proposed use will be located within the M1 zoning district and surrounded by established or proposed warehouse and distribution facilities. The proposed use shall not be any more noxious or offensive to the surrounding uses. The public interest and welfare, supporting the proposed conditional use shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests which are adversely impacted by the establishment of the proposed use. The proposed parking lot is to help reduce congestion within the existing truck stop/ travel plaza. The parking lot will help to improve traffic flow in and out of the site and reduce potential conflicts with other vehicles and pedestrians visiting the site. As previously stated, the applicant provided a truck route exhibit, which you see here on this slide, which demonstrates the routes in which the trucks will travel to and from the site. In conclusion, this conditional use permit satisfies the criteria set forth in Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2022-027 with conditions in order to mitigate the potential adverse impacts. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman. Members of Planning Commission, my name is Ken Rodman. I work for VHB, the engineering firm advancing this plan. Address is 4500 Main Street, Virginia Beach, Virginia, 23462. I think Ms. Collier did a fantastic job outlining the reason why we want to advance this project. It's really about public safety, mostly, because right now the trucks and the passenger vehicles, which were initially intended to be bifurcated and separated by parking lots, they're not interconnected, if you've been to the facility. The number of trucks that are using the facility has created a conflict with the passenger vehicles. So by creating a truck parking lot for them, to get them out of the passenger vehicle area, to make that whole operation of the facility operate more safely. Also, by giving truck drivers a place here in Suffolk, adjacent to Center Point Commerce Park, you, you're essentially removing trips that are occurring today where trucks will go out on the Route 58, they'll drive out to Love's out in Franklin or further west to do their overnight idling, shower, food, you know, before they have to come back in and load up the next day to drive out. If they can stay within, within the park, you're, you're removing those trips from 58. They are parking on adjacent streets, unfortunately. They have nowhere to go. The Virginia Department of Transportation, as well as the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, both in the last couple of years have released reports stating how the state overall is underserved by these types of travel plazas, and particularly in the Hampton Roads area. I don't need to hit on any of the other, other points. I think Ms. Collier did a fantastic job, and I'm available for comments and questions afterwards. I do have an owner's representative here. If you have any operational questions, Mr. Brian Porch, who works for the facility, can answer any operational questions you may have about the facility. But right now, because of the way the trucks find it difficult to, to maneuver in and out, they're not, they're not fully recognizing their business. The, the folks that are operating this today acquired it in 2020. It was originally done by the pilot Flying J in 2017. They agreed to the condition for the idling and overnight, essentially because of the mobile home park that used to be next door, which is no longer there. That all became part of the acquisition. We, we re-subdivided the property so that the truck parking lot would be contiguous to the Flying J or the Sadler Travel Center. And, and by doing so, we, we created a condition where one half the property had a conditional use permit and the other half did not. So we have to go through this process to make the whole property consistent so that it can function properly. It'll also allow the operator of the facility to fully open up their kitchen again. They haven't been able to do that because they weren't able to generate enough business as originally intended because the trucks just find it too frustrating. So if the trucks can actually park there, they will eat there, they can shower there, they can rest there as originally intended, and, and the facility will, will flourish. Again, I'm here to answer any questions and address any rebuttal area if you need it. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of this request, other than Mr. Rodman?
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Brian Harris. I'm a Suffolk resident, small business owner, husband and father. And trucks are a crazy thing in the city right now. I mean, I've been living here for about 15 years, and it's just recently they've been overloaded. And I mean, you really look at the narrative that Kevin gave, this is almost like a bad bar joke. It starts off with, how many truck stops can you put in a residential growth area? And that's what we're doing. But the truck's got to go somewhere. And it's close to my house, but I want the trucks off the road. As an anecdote, this morning I had a meeting downtown with some, some folks. And I'll leave this over here for you to look at. And I know Mr. Lewis is putting up some good work on signs, but I don't think the truckers are listening to it. So in support of this, my follow-up call is to figure out a better way to manage where these trucks do and don't go. I'm going to put that on you guys to, to enforce that or to encourage people to figure out a better way. This is, this is the truck that blocked me in on Main Street. I had a three-hour meeting thinking, man, that was out of case. So I got out of that meeting, and three hours later, now there were four trucks blocking me in. And that's right at the intersection of Main Street, where everybody goes to enjoy good breakfast. We got to get the trucks under control. This meeting's structured a little bit weird, where I have some questions that I would think you would want to ask. So some ideas I'm going to put up that maybe you guys can address that are concerned. Specifically, is this going to generate more truck traffic for us by creating this oasis where people can go and park? Again, we got to get them off the roads. I think that we just need this data and this information to inform us moving forward, is this going to create more traffic? The next piece that I heard early from the staff report was something to the lines that traffic has increased beyond what was anticipated. And for Mr. Lewis and Mr. Saunders, I'd call you guys to the table as well. What did we miss in the plan that exceeded our expectations? Why isn't the traffic what we expected? Why is it more? And maybe we can take some lessons learned from that and imply that, apply that to decisions going forward. Anyways, just some thoughts. I think we need a place to park trucks. This seems like a pretty decent idea to get them out of the way, selfishly for me, off the road in front of my house. So thank you.
Mr. Harris? Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? If not, Mr. Rodman, you have any additional comments or?
Opposition.
Huh? Opposition? I'm asking for opposition. You have any rebuttal to what? There's no actual opposition, so is there any opposition to this request? Here are none? Mr. Rodman, do you have any additional comments you would like to make?
Would like to address the gentleman's concern about, will this, you know, be a magnet and generate more trips? I think what the reality is, the trucks that are coming through this corridor, Suffolk, are already coming there, right? They're using the facilities, they're, they're going to every one of these warehouses that, you know, have been flourishing within the city. What you're getting is those, after they do their, their delivery, they need a place to go before they can do their next pickup, right? So we can either have them stay locally, right there in this lot, off the main road, or we can throw them back on 58 and have them drive out to Franklin. So I, I think what you're going to see, hopefully, is maybe even a reduction of traffic on 58 with the trucks back and forth, because they won't have to go, you know, do the back and forth route between their, their original drop-off and then their next pickup, if they can stay within the community, within the zoned community of industrial, you know, to, to do their job.
Thank you, sir. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for traffic. So I don't know, Mr. Lewis, you want to do it or? Probably not. And, and if, Brittany, if we could get that slide up that shows the layout of the project?
Yes, that's, that's it. When I, when I looked at this, I'm thinking, is, you know, this probably going to be real good, we need this. But I remember at, at one of our earlier meetings, I believe the adjacent property to this, west of this, is where a future fire station maybe will be put. Is that correct?
It's further west than what's shown on this layout here. It's actually west of the, the Enterprise Drive intersection. So it's going to be close to a quarter mile to the west of this location.
Okay. And, and then if you look at the, the connector, I'm trying to, right down here at the bottom, see the little red dot up there?
Yes, sir.
And it looks like there's a, a right turn lane, I guess on trucks going west to turn into the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
That's just past the intersection where a light is that also would allow the trucks to enter. Is that correct?
That's correct. The entrance on Holland Road is designed to be a right-in-only.
Right-in-only.
Yes, sir.
What's to prohibit trucks that are going west from trying to make a right turn out of that, that entrance there?
A minimum?
We just heard fellow say something, they don't like to read signs, and they don't, so.
At a minimum, I mean, there will be signs there, and with the angle of that entrance coming out, I, I would think that through the site plan design, we could probably channelize that to make it very difficult for a truck to make a left out, or a right out, I'm sorry.
To me, that just looks like a real dangerous place to allow trucks to slow down and make right turns into the area. That, maybe it's just me. 58's so screwed up that it just looks like a compound.
At that point, we'll have three, three lanes westbound, and then the additional right turn lane with the deceleration lane there. So they'll have room to, to get off and slow down. And at that angle that they're coming into that entrance will also aid them to, to get off the road a little bit more quickly and easily.
I can't read it. What is the length of that deceleration lane?
At a minimum, I'm not sure what it shows on here. So 150 foot in the length of the taper, and then 200 feet additional in the full width of deceleration lane. So 350 feet total.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Is that the holder? I was on his way away.
Just one, just, just one owner. I'm, yeah, yes, sir. I'm sorry. I didn't catch your name. Did I understand you just say that the reason why we didn't, you didn't have, because I remember this, we specifically had this conversation about no overnight. Do you have any idea why we said no, why you said no overnight?
Back in two, back in 2017, when this was going through for the initial conditional use permit to allow a fueling center here, there was some minor opposition from the mobile home park that was immediately adjacent to it.
Okay.
That mobile home park land is Zone B2, and has since been acquired and, and, and future, most likely will develop as a B2 parcel. But it was really done as a concession to, to placate the mobile home residents at that time.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval with conditions of CUP 2022-027.
Second.
Any other discussion on the motion? Vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations to Sadler Truck Parking and Mr. Rodman. This will go to City Council on March 15th with a recommendation for approval. This concludes our public hearings for today. Next item on our agenda is the old business? No?
No old business.
Okay, we'll go to new business, Mr. Wyman.
Yes, sir. So this happened a little out of sequence this month, but as you recall, we have informed you that moving forward, we, we have thresholds for what we identify as significant land use applications. So ironically enough, the first month that we're doing this, we have two different applications, technically three different applications. Two of those are companion items that we will present to you all. And the purpose of this is to, more of an FYI, to make you aware, to introduce you to these items. At this point, staff has not fully analyzed or dug into our staff reports regarding these, so we're going to introduce you to what the applications are, where they are, and, and should you have any comments, feel free, but I don't anticipate this kind of being a Q&amp;A session. So with that being said, like I said, this is a little out of sequence. Traditionally, you will see these before City Council. They're a couple times a year where the first Wednesday of the month falls on a, the first day of the month. On those times, you all will hear them about a week after. So we presented these to City Council last week in an informational session, and today you all will get kind of that same presentation. So the first item is Lake Kilby Shores. This is a conditional rezoning request, and Joshua Bateman will brief you on that, just to bring you up to speed on what this request is. But you may recall, a couple months ago, you did receive, or did have a public hearing on an item. It has since been modified and necessitating review before you all again. So Josh?
Good afternoon. My purpose here is to summarize you on the modified version of the Lake Kilby Shores rezoning. This current proposal involves four subject parcels which are located within the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District, about five-minute drive from the downtown Suffolk. The applicant is requesting rezoning, as with that previous rezoning application, from residential state to residential medium density. These are the four subject parcels that are being requested for rezoning here. To the north of the parcel, our single-family parcels on Lake Kilby Road, zoned rural estate, and the Pitch Kettle Farms subdivision, which is zoned residential low density. There's also a large undeveloped parcel that is over in this direction here, which is zoned Commerce Park. To the south, our single-family is, is a single, single-family residence beyond which are developed and undeveloped properties zoned M2 heavy industrial. To the east is the Route 58 bypass and undeveloped property zoned conservation. In fact, the southernmost parcel actually property zoned conservation. In fact, the southernmost parcel actually borders the route or backs up to the Route 58 bypass. And to the west are agricultural use properties in the Agricultural A District currently being used for agriculture. The applicant's rezoning exhibit represents a boundary survey of the four parcels which are being rezoned. These are tax map parcels 3326, 3348, 3348A, and 3349. The total acreage of these parcels is approximately 88 acres. The subject parcels are located on Lake Cahoon and Lake Kilby Roads, approximately 0.9 miles from Pitch Kettle Road to the north, from that intersection about 0.7 miles from Holland Road to the south to that intersection. These properties are currently undeveloped, consist of a mix of farmland and forest. The southernmost parcel, as I noted, does abut the Route 58 bypass. But of course, it has no access to that highway. The latest conceptual plan depicts the revised layout of the eventual subdivision with the elimination of tax parcel 3347, excuse me. And that, just for your heads up, is this parcel right here. So that is no longer in the application. The project will have two street connections to the existing road network, one to Lake Kilby Road and one to Lake Cahoon Road. The proposed gross density is 2.34 dwelling units per acre, which is less than the 4.4 maximum prescribed in the residential medium density district. The minimum lot size in that district is 10,000 square feet. The applicant's proffered contribution with respect to schools will be evaluated relative to the adequate public facility standards of the UDO, about which we've had some considerable discussion here today, to determine whether the project sufficiently advances public school capacity. But as this proffer is currently written, excuse me, the applicant's school proffer amounts to $12,698.97 per single-family detached dwelling unit, or roughly $2.59 million in total. The applicant is limited per his proffers to 204 single-family detached dwellings, each which will have to have a minimum finished floor area, heated floor area, I should say, of 1,850 square feet. The other proffers, the applicant has proffered the use of certain siding and roofing materials. And with respect to the traffic impacts, which I'm sure will be a topic of discussion on this item next month, the owner has proffered to make road improvements as outlined in the approved traffic impact study that was modified and is dated November 2022. That traffic impact study proposes the following improvements. Improvement widening of Lake Kilby Road and Lake Cahoon Road along the property frontage approximately 1,750 linear feet to include right and left turn lanes, curb and gutter, closed or piped stormwater drainage improvements, and a mill and overlay of the existing asphalt. Also, improvement widening of Lake Kilby Road within the existing right-of-way beyond the limits of the property in either direction to provide 20 feet of pavement width or 10 feet of dedicated travel lane in either direction, a mill and overlay of the existing pavement section, and regrading the ditches as necessary for drainage purposes to allow positive drainage away from the roadway. And finally, westbound right turn lane on Holland Road to the south at the intersection with Lake Cahoon Road. So that is the proffers as currently proposed, and that's the summary of the project.
Thank you, Josh. For the next one, we have a rezoning request and a conditional use permit request tied to the Pinnacle Storage Project. This is a rezoning from RL to B2 at the corner of Shoulders Hill Road and Pewsville Road, which would lead to the companion application, a conditional use permit for a self-service storage facility. As you recall, our thresholds, we call those the 100s, the previously Kilby Shores being over 100 units. This, as a commercial project, exceeds 100,000 square feet. So that is how it meets the threshold of a significant land use item. So Grace Brazil will present you with the overview.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I will be providing both summaries for the RZN 2022-008 as well as the CUP 2023-003. The applicant for Pinnacle Storage proposes a rezoning and a conditional use permit for the property located at the intersection of Shoulders Hill Road and Pewsville Road for the purpose of developing a mini warehouse use. This property is located on the outer edge of the inner ring suburban use district in the Northern Growth Area. The property is 6.27 acres in size and is currently zoned RL, residential low zoning district. And the applicant is proposing to conditionally rezone the property to B2 general commercial zoning district and obtain a concurrent CUP for the mini warehouse use. Proffers have been provided as part of this request and would limit the site as proffered to just the mini warehouse use, as well as proffers various elevations for the site. The applicant has stated that they are seeking a rezoning at this location as they believe that the property's corner location at a signalized intersection and its visibility to moderately high traffic better lend itself to a transitional commercial use rather than a residential use. So this is the conceptual layout associated with this CUP. It does depict six buildings that have a cumulative total floor area of a little more than 137,000 square feet in area, as Kevin Wine referenced. Since the proposal is for a total floor area greater than 100,000 square feet, this request has been deemed a significant land use item. Both the rezoning and CUP is scheduled for the next planning commission meeting on March 21st, which at that time, staff will provide a detailed analysis and recommendation. But that does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Grace, and that is an overview, your first of what we anticipate being several significant land use items moving forward. So we wanted to present those as FYIs. As it relates to preliminary plats, we did not have any this past month to approve, but there's one additional thing that I did want to do while I have a moment here and introduce you all to a new planner who's going to work with us. Kevin Alexander has a great name and he's going to be a planner one with us, or is a planner one with us. So just wanted to introduce you to him. You'll probably see him presenting some conditional use permits before you all, before you know it. So.
Got a question. We're going to look forward to seeing this presentation, any large projects coming for us each month?
Potentially, if we have any that meet that threshold. At this point, we probably have a couple in the queue. I don't anticipate any of those being ready by next month. So as they come on, we'll try to keep you all informed.
So next we need the status report from City Council meeting on January 18th. Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir. Let me go all the way back here. Bear with me. That was quite a meeting. We've been very busy. So going back to January 18th, we had rezoning request, RZN 2022-004 conditional. This was, let's see, that was not an item that you all saw again, but I'll just provide you with a brief overview of this. This has been its Greek quarter. The developer, the City Council opted to reconsider this request as originally amended by City Council back in June of 2022, specifically as it relates to some of the phasing requirements there before intersection improvements are in. They've tabled that to, well, yeah, last week, but they tabled it again. I believe it was six months out. It's fairly far out at this point. So anyway, just an FYI on that item. That's not something you all would have seen. That's a City Council action. So rezoning request, RZN 2022-012. This is HRSD Treatment Plant. This was to rezone property from CP to M2 heavy industrial for that north piece that's immediately adjacent to the Danes, sorry, to the James River there. That was approved. Then there was the companion conditional use permit that did two things. One, expanded the capacity for the existing plant and then encompassed this new parcel that they have to the north there to be a part of that conditional use permit to include the sewage treatment plant, utility facilities not specifically enumerated, and research labs and outdoor operations. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2022-030. This was the existing legal non-conforming structure at 7622 South Key Road to restore a property, a residential structure that caught fire, greater than 50% of its replacement cost. This was approved with the conditions. And ordinance text amendment, OTA 2022-006, for amendments to the code of the City of Suffolk, the Unified Development Ordinance, as it relates to cluster subdivisions. That was approved by City Council.
Commissioners, comments? I'm going to start on that side. Got any comments? Good. Ms. Bauer, how did you enjoy your first meeting?
Good. Eyes opened. Thank you.
Nothing for that, then?
I was just going to say, welcome to Mary Ellen, and we look forward to working with you. And Kevin, welcome to the Kevin group.
I would just like to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the City Council. I now have some more estrogen in the room. Welcome aboard, Ms. Bauer.
No, you appreciate.
Oh, my God.
Mr. Preepaw, you have any comments?
Yes, I stay away from that. I would like to ask a question, though, of the folks that went to the City Council meeting and some of us who didn't go but saw it on video regarding the solar farm, two plats on Indian Trail. One was approved, one was not approved, and owned by the same people. What is, it didn't make sense to me as to what happened on that. What is the applicant able to reapply for that? And does it come to us and then go to City Council again? I was confused about that.
As it relates to the Unified Development Ordinance, the applicant will have to wait one year.
Really? Well, I was a little disappointed in the way that turned out, but we're not elected, we're appointed. I do appreciate that, for those of you, the public, we appreciate your input in this because there's a lot of times we don't get the entire flavor of what's going on in those particular areas that we're not familiar with. And we appreciate the comments on that. I also appreciate the staff presentations and the preparation for all of this because it does, it is a lot of time that it does take to present it in a very professional manner. So with that, thank you very much.
I can repeat what you said. Thanks to the audience and thanks for the commissioners. And we stand adjourned.